Good morning, everyone. Be calling this work session for October 8th, 2024 to order. If you can please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance and salute to the state flag.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Salute the flag, the state of New Mexico. The state's symbol of perfect friendship among the United States.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item is approval of the work session agenda.
So move.
I'll second. Do we have any discussion? Okay, see none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, agenda's approved. Moving on to presentations. Presentation from HMS Quarterly Report, Dr. Dan Othello.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and County Manager Webb and County Staff. Thank you for the opportunity again to come in and speak briefly regarding services at Hidalgo Medical Services in your packet that you received, and of course, on the screen are the traditional numbers that I have been sharing with you regarding our primary services, specific to unduplicated patients and total visits by, by, excuse me, by quarter. With the main intent to let you know that we continue to serve our community in a very effective way in thirteen clinical sites across the region, both in Grant and Hidalgo County. The other thing that I just briefly highlighting is our recruitment efforts. So I include in there the number of medical, behavioral health, dental providers that we've been bringing on board to get back to our targets, to effectively serve the community based on the demand that we receive. So on the medical side in that first section, I just want to briefly share with you that the services and members are going very well. The community has been very receptive to Megan Montoya, and she's getting busier as she establishes her practice there. On the behavioral health side, again, there's the metrics that I traditionally provide. I won't expand on them right now. Dr. Odizaga's gonna do a short presentation regarding behavioral health services, and she would be happy to answer any questions you have in that section, specific to services being rendered and/or the recruitment efforts. In the dental services, as you can see, we've increased our dental staff by two additional dentists. So that's providing more access to the communities. We also, I think I shared with you last time, Dr. Bianca Ramidis is started with us earlier this year in Lourdesburg, in Hidalgo County. She specifically does pediatric dentistry. And again, her practice continues to grow to serve the pediatric population in the region. We also provide a short section of the numbers for family support. And just as a brief reminder, family support is also known as our enabling services. And this, this is the staff that meet with our patients in the community to ensure that they have the appropriate insurance enrollment and/or to assist them with social determinants of health needs to support their access to care such as food insecurities, help with utilities, transportation, and other such services. And then lastly, we have an update on the senior services. That's the last section in my report. We're seeing an increase in congregate meals, which means that more and more seniors are coming in to have their meals in the senior centers, in the five senior centers, which is good for socialization. We have also hired a events coordinator that's now in the senior centers that's working directly with Mr. Holmes to ensure that each of the sites has that appropriate, appropriate activities for our seniors. So those numbers are continuing to decrease. We have completed this year, every year, the New Mexico Area Agency on Aging comes in and does an assessment of all five sites. And they completed that assessment, and of course, they had some opportunities that they identified. We had to respond with a action plan to do the corrections on those findings. But I do want to stress that we are in full compliance with the NM AAA as it relates to all the policies and procedures that are required of us. And although that action plan is being implemented simultaneously. So with that, I think that's all the updates I have for you today, and I will be happy to stand for any questions before we invite Dr. Odizaga.
Thank you. Questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next presentation will be by HMS Behavioral Health Tu Casa Quarterly Report, Dr. Teresa Odizaga.
Good morning, thank you. So thank you for, for listening to our quarterly report regarding our behavioral health department and allowing us to share. I first want to thank members of our Tu Casa Advisory Board Committee. I'd like to thank Susie Trujillo, Dr. Bob Garrett, Joseph Andazola, Christina Wolford, Ronald Hartley, Ron Hall, and Alicia Edwards, who all continue to do great work with us. So all the informations in the packet, I'm not gonna go through everything in detail, but just mention some highlights. I wanted to mention that we did present to the Legislative Health and Human Services Committee last month, September 24th, in proposing the idea of a regional behavioral health care system in Grant County, hopefully eventually serving this whole region, this region of the state. It focused on the crisis services, the whole spectrum of services, which we currently don't have in this part of the state. So including Crisis Triage Center, which we've been working on, Mobile Crisis Team with mobile response to people out in the community throughout the county. And at this time, Hidalgo County has some form of mobile crisis. So we're looking at what we need to do in Grant County to serve our, our community here. And then also eventually fourteen-day crisis stabilization, and eventually hopefully an inpatient unit, which would serve all behavioral health patients and people with psychiatric illnesses requiring inpatient treatment, but also substance use disorders. And I'll show you here, I included slides in, in here, but I'm not gonna go through all of them. But I think one of the important, a couple of those slides that are important to just make note of is looking at the total number of behavioral health visits, just looking at 2023. The visits were, and unique patients. So, so here it, it breaks down unique patients for mental health services and the number of visits we had in 2023, and then also substance misuse services. And then I'll go down to the next slide. When we look at visits by diagnosis for 2023, there are a lot more patients here. So this is also including the number of patients with behavioral health diagnoses that our primary care providers see also. And so in the total number of unique patients at HMS, over half are being seen for behavioral health conditions, whether they're substance misuse or mental health. And about thirty percent of those are actually being seen in the behavioral health department. So in my mind, that's good information to have. It tells us that our primary care providers are providing a lot of the care, which primary care providers do. But it also just reinforces the importance to me of continuing to provide integrated care and education to our primary care physicians, because a lot of times people don't want to come see me or see a therapist. They want to see their primary care provider, and a lot of times, people never make it to behavioral health. And so it's so important for us at HMS to continue, in our community, to, to look at health, physical health, mental health, and in a behavioral health in a integrated way. And treat, when we're seeing each individual person, making sure we're treating them as a whole person, not for whatever specific issue they're coming in, but looking at all aspects of, of someone's care. And so I mainly just wanted to point that out. There are other things that I included in the slides, but we don't have to go through all of those. And then lastly, I'll just go over the graphs related to Tu Casa specifically. So looking at Tu Casa, so that's all the services there, including the therapy services, the psychiatric services. And our unique patients and completed appointments are staying right about where they've been the last four months or so. And then related to MAT, so MAT services, we, we have seen in general, that number came up a little bit this last month, or in August. But I think with new, we've had a lot of new providers recently. And so we're working on having those new providers more comfortable with MAT. And, and now in the next coming months, next couple of years, we're working on mental health and behavioral health expansion, which includes a lot more substance misuse treatment. We're gonna be, you know, likely working with our detention center and how we can capture people who need those services and make sure they're not just being lost to the system, lost to follow-up when they leave the detention center, working through care coordinators and peer support workers. And that's all the information I have now, and I'll stand for any questions for anyone.
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioner Edwards?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to our next presentation, Hiller Regional Medical Center Board of Trustees, Dr. Fred Fox, Chair.
Thank you. First, I wanted to just note that as you appointed, Gail Standler, Certified Nurse Midwife, is now on the Board of Trustees and has been actively involved. We thank you for that appointment. She's taken on a lot and has become an active participant in the board meetings and deliberations. Wanted to note that recently, the services of a medical oncologist at the Cancer Center has been, the time of that individual's been increased. This reflects the increased utilization of the Cancer Center by the community. This is an important service to the community. We have an aging population and cancers of primary diagnosis. And residents have to travel at a distance to receive care and are at great disadvantage, as are their families. So the increase in the ability to provide services is important. The board is interested in following metrics of the utilization of the Cancer Center so that we can better prepare for future needs of the Cancer Center as its growth continues. We have engaged a consulting firm, Decker, to look at the feasibility of various options about revising or replacing the physical plant of the hospital. It's an aging structure, it's now forty years old. It's designed for a delivery of medical care in a way that's no longer optimal. There's an increase now in emphasis on outpatient evaluation and treatment. And the aging structure of the hospital is requiring significant investments to upgrade portions of it. So Decker's currently involved in that feasibility study, and that result should be available within a couple of months. Recently, as you're aware, the Legislative Health and Human Services Committee met at Western New Mexico for several days. Hospital was involved in a number of those presentations. We're, frequently, we were in conjunction with Hidalgo Medical Center, and we presented a unified and inclusive and engaged coalition of, of community partners interested in healthcare of the area. It overall was well-received. We received feedback from several senior legislators that they were impressed, recognized the need for support of healthcare in the community, and stated they would be interested in sponsoring legislation to that effect. Recently, the hospital, or the Board of Trustees Finance Committee has become, which has been meeting regularly over the last several months, has been looking at, been involved in looking at the revenue cycle of the hospital. We're doing this because we're interested in making sure that the finances of the hospital, revenue that can be obtained from collection from, for our services is being utilized appropriately, or being conducted appropriately. And we're looking at ways to try to monitor that on an ongoing basis. Excuse me. And finally, we've been involved in trying to reestablish the residency program. Again, this has been in conjunction with numerous partners across the region and the state, but most notably Hidalgo Medical Services. We are interested in reestablishing the Family Medicine Residency Program for several reasons. One is they additionally, they provide additional primary care services, and oftentimes to a segment of our population that has trouble accessing primary care services. Additionally, I hear from my sources outside of the hospital of the number of people, especially elderly, in the community that don't have access to primary care services. Many of those folks go elsewhere for that. They then are hosp, they are then are referred for their diagnostic and treatment regimens to, in those outlined communities. This both represents an unnecessary distance for those people to travel, but also represents a loss, potential loss of revenue for the hospital. So it's important for the well-being of the hospital and the community that we are successful in recruiting primary care providers. We also need to look at the future replacements, specialty providers, and that's also on our agenda. That's the extent of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fox. Questions?
Nothing, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item on the agendas will be a presentation of regular meeting agenda item, consideration of AT&amp;T Tower application, 16 Red Cliff Road, Membras, New Mexico. Mr. Williamson.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. We're, my name is Dean Williamson. I'm with Wireless. Dean Williamson, I'm with Wireless Tower Solutions. I'm your consultant for tower applications. We've been with you for, I guess, over a year now, but this is the first time I've had the chance to present to you, because this is the first new tower. So just to start off, we are recommending this for approval. The applicant has met or has said they will meet all of the ordinance requirements. I don't know if you have the package in front of you, but I'll just go through the, the front matter of this application to talk about some key points and then stand for questions. So it is a new tower, it's on, in Membras, and I'll show you the map in a minute. This is the justification for the new tower from Verizon. I don't know why we have AT&amp;T on the agenda, but it is Verizon. There is no coverage in the area, there is no opportunity for them to co-locate on a, another tower in the area. So that is why they're, they're applying for this new tower. This is their existing coverage, and I might be able to blow this up a little bit. There we go. So this is, when it says seven hundred, that means seven hundred megahertz, and that's the existing coverage right now in the area. And these slides, again, are all from, from Verizon and proprietary. This is their proposed coverage that the new tower will, will provide. And I want to point out that this is, you'll see down here, it's, zoom back out. It's not showing it there, but this is RS CP, which basically is, the colors mean whether you will receive it in your house, in your car, or when you're standing outside. So it's a, it's a realistic measurement of the coverage. So that is what the new tower is proposed to add. And I think when you have your package, you'll see more, well, we have them here. So this is, there it is, RS RP in decibels. That is the current coverage and proposed coverage. So you can see what it's adding there as I go back and forth. This is the total coverage, not necessarily what you'll see with inside a car or inside a house, just where the radio signals reach to. And this is all 4G LTE coverage, seven hundred megahertz C-band. So that's their total proposed coverage. Here's the site plans, I'm not gonna go through them in depth, but we do have a map here of the proposed site on this property. And I don't know if you've received it yet, and I can pull it up if you haven't, but there was one, we mailed all of the adjacent property owners within fifteen hundred feet of this new proposed tower. There was one reply from Ms. Nunley, living in San Antonio, who owns a piece of property right about here. And it's twenty-seven hundred feet from the proposed site, but I have no doubt that it would be visible from that location. The problem is, of course, as you know, this is all forestry land, or there's only small portions along the road that are private. And this, this owner, this particular owner, has agreed to lease their property to the cell tower. We'll go down and take a look at the picture of the cell tower that they proposed. That's the site, a little more of the site. You can see in the top right portion is where the tower will be located. Type tower it is. Here it is. So right now, there's only one antenna on, on the top belonging to Verizon, but it has the ability to support four, three other carriers, so four total, which is a requirement of the ordinance. And these are the property owner letters that were sent out. I believe we had seven, and Ms. Nunley was the only reply that we got. So the rest of the package is all pretty technical stuff with the lease. We've received the insurance and the plans, of course. They have asked for ordinance relief for specific portions of it until it's approved, because if it's not approved, the company is not wanting to invest in any, anything that would, you know, that could be done later. So the first one is the soil study. This is where they go out and they drill and make sure that the soil will support the tower. The second one is the, the bond. Think I went past the bond, here it is. There's, the second one is the bond. For a bond, the ordinance requires a one-hundred-thousand tower removal bond, and if it's approved, they will get that bond. There's the soil study. The third one is the structural analysis, FCC license, and contractor's license. So those are all kind of together in one letter. The structural analysis, of course, will be, will be done after the structure is built. The FCC license and the contractor's license, they haven't even got the contractor yet. So once they do, they'll provide that, as well as the FCC license. So those are, that's the relief request that they've asked for. I believe it's reasonable, and we actually track that as those items come in. We'll make sure that they're all provided to the county and uploaded on the website. So that's the, that's the proposed tower. And again, we're recommending it for approval, and take any questions you may have.
This is a, my only question would be is, I have it here as consideration of AT&amp;T Tower application.
That's Verizon. I don't know how AT&amp;T got on here.
So it's a Verizon?
Right.
Okay, I'm just clarifying, making sure that, okay. Any other questions?
Nothing.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Incidentally, I won't be here for the tenth, but the agent for the applicant will be here. She's coming in from Albuquerque to present it to the Commission on the tenth.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay. Moving on to county reports. Ms. Rebecca.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Just a couple of updates. We'll be starting tomorrow, our crack fill project. We figured it's gonna take about two weeks. We have equipment being delivered by the concessionaire, and they're gonna provide us with training tomorrow. So Wednesday's our training day, so we're just gonna have all hands on deck, get everybody out there, make sure we, we know what we're doing with the equipment and we're able to operate it safely. This is some, really a new way for us to address some of our maintenance needs. In the past, we've always kind of wrapped maintenance into a bigger construction project. I think that with doing this, that it actually allows us to be more in control of the costs of the project and gives us more control at the airport level. So I'm really happy that we're gonna have this opportunity. You'll also see that we have our updated 2022 inplanement data. And again, an inplanement is anybody who gets on a plane at our airport and flies out. People flying in don't count. So everybody that leaves here, we had in 2022, six thousand, need glasses, six thousand five hundred and fifty. And as you'll see, you know, kind of going back through the COVID years, you know, we had kind of a bottom out there. But even before that, you know, back when we had, you know, boutique in there last year, our numbers are climbing steadily. And, you know, really to see over six percent, almost six and a half percent gain, is, you know, pretty unusual. I mean, across the country, you usually, if you're lucky, you're seeing two percent. And so for us, we're seeing that steady growth. And finally, next Sunday, Mike and Larry fly off to Dallas-Fort Worth to can go through their annual live-fire training. This is something that is FAA requirement. Each twelve consecutive calendar months, they have to have the certification, otherwise we are out of compliance. It's a really great training where the guys get to work on turret trucks. They actually get to go in two planes and put out fires. They get to extricate dummies, representing bodies. So it, it's a great training course for them. So we have it set up now where Mike and Larry are on one schedule where they go together, and our new fire chief and Lauren Gonzalez, they travel together so that we have that kind of training, cross-training together. So I stand for any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Detention Center?
Morning, Chairman, Commissioners. We currently have four officer openings at the Detention Center. We have two officers in training, and we did conduct interviews last Thursday, and we're doing a background check on one individual. And the accreditation update, I'm continuing to update policies. We have the administration working on uploading them to Power DMS. Over the next two weeks, this week and next week, we're working on our post orders for each post within the facility to update those, upload them into Power DMS, and also on the detainee handbook that detainees get when they get booked into the facility. On September 30th, our population was ninety-three detainees, with an average population for September of ninety-eight. As of Tuesday, October 1st, we did have one COVID positive in September, which was an officer. Our RISE program in September had twenty-four RISE participants, with nine in the facility and fifteen in the community. We're gonna have our RISE Quarterly Meeting in November in person, where we meet with all the other RISE in the state that runs the RISE program and share ideas and show what we're doing in our programs. We recently partnered up with the JPO and the program they run for at-risk youth, and we had one of our RISE clients go talk to the, go talk to them. And that was a success and really helped the at-risk youth. Our door slider replacement project at the facility has been completed. Also, portable building update, it is ready to get delivered. Also, portable building update, it is ready to get delivered. We kind of slowed things down to make sure that all the contractors and maintenance has time to make sure everything's done properly. The water, the sewer, electric. We're also going to put camera systems within that building also. Now that that building is coming underway and getting ready for delivery, it might be a little, it might be towards the end of October instead of the middle, but it will be delivered. So now we're talking to the RISE and the state on developing plans for a greenhouse for the RISE. As I told you before, that portable building is going to be used for reunification with parents and children, working with CYFD and programming. We are working with different agencies to bring in. And one of the things that brought up was a greenhouse. We are looking at plans to put in a greenhouse within that, within the facility grounds. Key event dates, we do have the commission detention center visit coming up. I know I'm working with Christie on that. And also, we're finally able to have a detention affiliate meeting set up next week. So we'll be meeting with all the other jails in the state on MAP programming, so on accreditation. The accreditation audit team's going to be there also. So I know that Grace Phillips and Clay Corn had really wanted to have a meeting, and we're finally able to put that together. So we're going to meet next week. And I'll meet with the accreditation audit team and see where we're going to go for our test audit here before the year ends. I'm open for any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You guys have a good day.
Okay. Next one is our emergency manager, Scott.
Good morning, Commissars. How y'all doing this morning? Do have a few updates to provide at this time. Under the current projects, in the side number one there, we did finally receive our notice for the State Homeland Security Grant Program, $35,000 for Incident Commander's Radio Interface, which is kind of, just to give you a quick synopsis, it's a pretty interesting piece of equipment. Incident Commander can actually sit in one place, and he can, he can contact every, all cell phones, all type of radio, 700, 800 megahertz, UHF, VHF satellite phones, all from one console, and it all goes out at the same time. So it all comes in and goes out. He can contact all forms of communication at one time. It's pretty interesting. And we, I felt good about that. We're only one of 11 counties in the state to receive an award. So next, on the hazard mitigation plan, we've submitted, all the documents have been submitted, and we should have a, a draft copy of the plan in December to look at for the planning committee to look at. Under the Community Wildfire Defense Program and the, and the Wildfire Protection Plan, working with the state, it's, it's a reimbursable grant in that we have to submit invoices to the New Mexico Department of Forestry for payment. So I'm working with them to develop some milestones along the way when we're doing the plan, so we can get reimbursed quarterly, instead of having to pay for it all at once, and then getting reimbursed all at once. Working with the New Mexico Department of Homeland Security on the sandbags, we should have them delivered in the next two weeks. So, and as, like, if you read the newsletter I put out in October today, this week is Fire Prevention Week, and the National Fire Protection Association, their theme this, this year is Smoke Alarms, Make Them Work For You. And that's the official theme for Fire Prevention Week. And this year's focus is on, is on working smoke alarms. It comes in response from NFPA data that shows that the majority of US homes and their fire deaths continue to occur in homes with no smoke alarms and no working smoke alarms. So with that in mind, I've collaborated with Red Cross to set up so county residents get free smoke alarm installations. Partnered up with them. So I'm meeting up with, I'm getting the materials from the Red Cross, and I'll be putting out some detailed information on the county website, and on the county's Facebook page, on how you can go about getting these free smoke detectors installed in your home. So I'm looking forward to doing that. It's, it's a pretty, it's a pretty important project, and it hopefully will save some lives. Lastly, on the other two in the future projects, on the generator grants for the, the emergency shelter, the convention center, and the, the new public safety building, we did get approval from FEMA on the project. So the project has been approved, and we should get a grant notification sometime in December, the award notification. And lastly, that in mind, the New Mexico Department of Family and Security said they still had quite a bit of money to give out, so up to $24 million. So I'm putting some more funding for generators for the fire stations. And that's kind of important, because the fire stations themselves get extra, extra points for ISO ratings. And then we also have, you know, places of refuge throughout the county when we have these emergencies. Someplace people can go, get air conditioning, or warmth, or whatever it may be. It's kind of important, too. And also, going to look at getting some, five solar generators, 6,000 kilowatt solar generators, to put in some of the remote places in the county when we don't have, we have power outages. There's a lot of our comm sites out there that you cannot get fuel trucks to, propane trucks or whatever, so you can't get emergency generators up there. So we could take these solar generators and put them up there and actually run our comm sites until power comes back up. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next report is Mr. Robert, Finance Director.
Good morning, Commissioner Buxton, and County Commissioners. I'd like to present the Finance Director's Report for what's going on in Fiscal Services Department, give you some insight. Current projects, we need to accept the fiscal year 23 audit findings and report to Department of Finance and Administration, Local Government Division. Thursday, we're presenting CAR, our auditor, CAR rigs will be presenting to you our audit findings through a Zoom. So they will be available through Zoom for any questions that you have. And then we'll be asking you to sign a resolution accepting the audit findings, and so we can report the audit findings to DFA. We also continue to process budget adjustment requests for fiscal, current fiscal year 25. As I mentioned, we will be processing quite a few bars this year. What we're trying to do is true up our budget as, as much as possible. We're doing budget adjustments to account for grant revenue coming in, and to help the volunteer fire departments keep the equipment and fill their needs for this fiscal year. We also have a grants management policy that we're finalizing. This is to satisfy our single audit. So we'll probably be presenting that to you fairly soon. It's not completely finalized. We're also compiling information and delivering it to our current auditors for the fiscal year 24 audit. So we're uploading information into the portal, and just getting ready for them to come in. Chart of Accounts update is part of the Tyler rebuild. We're also looking at revamping our chart of accounts to smart code our GL strings, so that we have a better understanding of where our money is going, and what our account objects, our descriptions are for our departments. Future projects, we have a Budget to Actual variance meeting with departments. What we want to do is meet with departments and implement a new way to budget and achieve improvements, and capture future revenue expenditures accurately. One of the issues that I'm having in analyzing some of the data is that we don't necessarily have qualitative measures in place. And I'd like to implement some quantitative measures, so we can review our budgets, so we can know where we're going. Our budget should be our operating plan for the entire fiscal year, rather than just a compilation of budget authority. So I'd like to work with the departments in the future a little bit more closely. And the reason that this is a priority is because recently I've tried to analyze our maintenance costs, our fleet maintenance costs, and our vehicle replacement, our, especially our maintenance costs for heavy equipment. That seems to be something that we need to address. And we don't really have a total cost of ownership that we need to start deriving for all our, our fleet and equipment, so that the commission and administration has a better idea of, of when to replace, or when to pull the trigger on equipment, and try to get a different piece of equipment in because of rising maintenance costs. So key events and dates for October is, of course, we're going to work with departments and administration to establish a vehicle replacement that aligns to our policy. Again, I'm looking at certain quantitative measures that we can utilize to develop a specific, a specific point where we either replace a, a piece of equipment. One of the issues that I think we're having is for our, our heavy equipment, we don't necessarily have decent mechanics on staff. And with some of the heavy equipment, the key to it obviously is, is proper maintenance schedules. And many, many of the heavy equipment utilize hydraulics. That's a key to extending equipment life. A proper maintenance schedule, of course, would assist with that. And we don't necessarily have any tracking mechanisms for movement for our equipment. Idle time, we need to start measuring that to recognize retraining opportunities, so we don't run our cap, our, our heavy equipment unnecessarily, that we make sure we utilize it efficiently. And we also need to, again, isolate maintenance costs versus replacement. So there comes a point where it's diminishing returns, and we need to be a little bit more prudent with that. So Thursday, we'll be presenting two agreements. One is with Enterprise Fleet Maintenance, to help leverage some of our dollars. We have approximately 19 active fleet that are 2012 or older, that we need to start looking at replacing. Again, for, we need to do an analysis for rising maintenance costs versus replacement. This gives us a chance to leverage some of our dollars and replace some of the vehicles a little bit quicker than if we bought them outright, and the initial capital outlay we would require to buy them outright. And also with the equipment lease, it's an equity lease, so there's a residual value at the end of the lease that would help us re-roll into replacing and churning out the vehicles. Again, we also have an agreement with Wagner. Wagner is under the statewide price agreement to assist us with our heavy equipment, and some of that maintenance. Again, it would just help ensure that we're maximizing and efficiency and effectiveness of our, of our heavy equipment for our road department, and, and just help us analyze better the usage. Again, explore opportunities, opportunities for retraining. So those two agreements will be presented on Thursday. Again, Enterprise Fleet manages is a sourceable contract, and the Wagner Equipment Maintenance is under statewide price agreement. So those are two things that will be in, in October for the next board meeting. In November, our auditors will be in for fieldwork, and we'll, we'll be pulling, actually sampling for them, so they can go ahead and do the fieldwork on our audit. Again, we have our Tyler rebuild. We'll be meeting with the implementation manager for Tyler during the month of November and into December. And then December, I'd like to meet with department heads and elected officials as a department fiscal services to help support them on their budget decisions, and ensure that we are not very, there's not a lot of variance from the budget, if there is variance, that it's, it's qualitative and quantitative, so that the, again, the commissioners have a better informed decision making on some of the bars that we're going to be presenting to you. So I stand for any questions?
Thank you. Questions?
Nothing.
Questions, Commissioner? Thank you. I don't see our fire chief here, right? Okay, so moving on to the next report, Fleet Maintenance. Mr. Jason?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Fleet Maintenance report for you for today. 15 oil changes and inspections, 20 diagnosed and repairs, two units had the tires repaired or replaced. Our September projects, the new blade operator pickups are going into service soon. Waiting on some radios, and I think we have the gas card in now. So also, our off-road diesel fuel tank alarm upgrade and certification was done. So we did get that completed. And we're going to continue moving the obsolete, obsolete units through auction. Back to those new blade operator pickups, we are, we ordered some better hitches for those, so they can be when they're towed behind the blades. So that was a, a good plus for us in that department. That's everything for the Fleet Maintenance. If you guys have any questions on that.
Do you have any questions? Okay. RIT Director, Mr. Adam?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm happy to report that we have our new server infrastructure now in place. And with that in place now, that means my, me and my team will be able to start working on virtualizing our existing servers, and getting rid of the aged physical servers that we have. It's basically old equipment, and time to replace it with some newer equipment. So we have that in front of us now. And this creates a pretty good foundation for us to move forward with any future server implementations, any projects that require a server behind it. We now have the option to build a virtual server within the environment we have, which basically means we don't have to worry about buying hardware, if it's not absolutely necessary. So that can definitely save us in the long run. This has some great potential to help us continue moving forward with building our server environment. So we're definitely looking forward to fully utilizing that. So just so you know, we have this environment here at the admin building, over at the detention center, and over at the road department. And what it creates is an ability for us to copy the server environment back and forth, if need be. Under the assumption hardware here failed, we have the potential to still run the environment, even though the server environment may exist over at the detention center. So that type of server environment is exactly what I was intending to build. So we're getting a lot closer to having this in place now. Just last week, we were able to go through a phone system upgrade here at the admin building, as well as the road department and the conference center. So even though the system was, it's complete, we have it in place, for the most part is functional, we're still dealing with a couple of small configuration issues, and we're working with Western New Mexico Communications on that. But all in all, it was a successful upgrade, and we now have our desk phones and the management system behind it on a more modern platform. We're working on implementing our redundant firewalls, which were on the brink of completing here. We just basically need to get the timing down correctly, so we don't interfere with any site operations, especially now that elections kicked off today. More than likely, this will be an after-hours project. But once we have that in place, under the assumption one of our firewalls fails on us, the second firewall will automatically kick in and pick up where the other one left off. They have the exact same configuration on them, and that's called high availability. So we have a little bit of redundancy now here at our site. The second we're done with that, we'll go ahead and do the exact same thing over at the detention center. As Robert mentioned, we're continuing on with the financial rebuild, and we'll be having some more in-depth meetings on that in November and December. And this will also include, towards the end of that, towards the tail end of it, the AP automation portion of it, which is something that we look forward to as well. Continuing to work with HR on the applicant tracking solution. Right now, Michelle is going through some training on developing the appropriate platform behind it, such as uploading our existing job descriptions into this new environment. So I'm anticipating roughly around the end of November is when we'll be a little bit closer for a full implementation. What it'll mean is that when people apply on our website, they'll be directed to a slightly different portion, where they'll actually complete the full application process. And it'll be an online process versus printing out a document, filling it out, and physically turning it in. That's exactly what we'll be moving away from. This applicant tracking solution has other opportunities behind it, some internal things that we can work on within the HR department. So we're definitely looking forward to benefiting from these. So aside from that, I continue to have in the future projects, the cloud migration over to the Tyler Eagle Services. I haven't pulled the trigger on this yet. We're not quite ready in that we have so many other things going on. I don't want to throw this in the mix at the moment. So we'll eventually get there, but for now, we definitely have a lot of good things going on in the computing environment here. That's all I have. I stand for any questions.
Thank you. Questions?
Nothing.
Thank you. Our Planning Director, Mr. Joseph?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. So, thank you for the opportunity to share departmental updates. About two months ago, Jason introduced me as the Capital Projects Manager, but I liked to hear so much, I went ahead and moved into the Planning Department. So, regarding current projects under construction, of course, as you know, we're required to compile this package a week or so ahead of time, so some of these, these projects are actually a little further along than they were on this document. So, our North Hurley roadway project, Phase Three, of course, all the clearing and grubbing is complete, so all the debris is cleared off the edges of the roadway. The milling of the roadway surface is actually completed, so we're down to native soil now, and they're actually starting to haul in base course to build up the subgrade and then prepare for, for asphalt. So, if the weather cooperates as it's been doing, we should have this project completed by December 26th. We're still in the process of forming the retaining walls and shoring up some of the, some of the sloughing that's happening there. And then concurrently, they're working on the driveway approaches and the drive pads for the Hurley residents along this way, along this project. And again, we're mentioned, we're about 20% complete, so end of December is, like I say, our anticipated completion time of this. The other project we currently have under construction is the Upper Mimbres Valley Volunteer Fire Department Underground Water Storage Tanks. I know that's a, that's a mouthful there, but all excavation is complete. We started to install, the dead man anchor is in place. An update from this is actually the underground storage tanks are in place. They're working on plumbing those right now. The electrical feed has been installed from the main panel to the sub-panel, and so over the next couple of weeks, we're going to be installing the VFDs and getting the pumps wired in. These projects are expected to complete by the end of the year, and we're about 18% complete on these. Regarding future projects, and some of what is, I guess, also falls into current, is the, on the agenda for Thursday is the agreement with the six judicial courts. So, that is going to be that project coming forward to you guys, where we're looking at the safety and accessibility upgrades to the existing site, the existing courthouse or building a new judicial campus. And I believe that judicial campus, that location is the old corrections center. So, that'll be going forward in front of you guys for a vote on, on Thursday. Our plan is to get about 50% design development on these projects. That'll give us a high enough level of detail to actually produce high enough, accurate cost estimates for these. So, we didn't want to go all the way into construction drawings, that, I think that would have been a little bit, not the best use of our money, and that schematic design would have just been too general for us, so I think that's a nice middle ground for that. And so, that was based on consultation also with our architect on, on record. Another project we have going right now, our future project, is the Aldo Leopold Charter School, which is potentially our new public safety building.
[inaudible]
Our architects have already completed programming for that, that building, and actually, today we're going to be doing a workshop with, with the Sheriff, Charlene, and everybody else to, to actually start finalizing plans and working, working towards, towards a solid direction on that. One of the things we're working on within the department that I want to do is standardize our, our project planning process. We should be doing a scope of work, we should be doing project charters, we should be identifying contributors to the project, our SMEs should be identified, and then working on those roadway, or working on those projects and making sure we have all those stakeholders incorporated to that project throughout its duration. And then departmental process, processes is another thing that we're working on. Basically, it's going to be a, a long-term project here, but we really want to identify all of our day-to-day activities, how we serve the public, the, the applications that we take. Basically, we want to document everything we do from a day-to-day basis so we have it manual to turn in and make sure that that's set up for, for future folks coming into the department as well. And then a key date we have is our GIS mapper. He actually started yesterday, so we're going to be working on, on catching up on backlog, so. Stand for any questions?
Want to tell you, welcome aboard. I know you've been here a little while, but welcome aboard.
Nothing. Thank you.
Okay, going to maintenance, Mr. Jason.
Well, there are some pictures of the North Hurley project, if you guys want to see them. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. So, County Maintenance Report. Admin Building General Break Room Remodel is starting its design phase. I'll show you some pictures here in a moment. Got some at the fairground, the show arena, the skylight replacement, I get to show you those as well. Also, at the detention center, modular building site work. We're still prepping for that rise building to come in. Detention Center, at, we're doing that maintenance Conex box. So, what that's going to be is, there was an old Conex box there that we restored, get some roof repairs on it. It's going to end up being our tool shed and maintenance, general maintenance storage of things. That will help for the, the accreditation part of what the detention center's going through. Continued traffic marking at the courthouse, and we did order in a bleacher assembly fairgrounds for the fairgrounds at the rabbit barn and poultry barn. They needed some more room over there, and so it came in a little late this year for them to use it, but it'll be available for next year. Future projects, we still have replacing all the sanitary fixtures here in this building, and then that holding cell design installed at the courthouse. Stand for any questions on the county maintenance, and I'll go through the pictures. So, this is going to be the break room in the back. We're going to redo those cabinets and the ovens that are back there, just get them a little more updated. Besides the early nineties or late eighties, maybe that's what it is. Show arena skylights, replace sixteen of those in total. Roof repair, and then continue the, the marking and striping for AD accessibility. Move on to the road department. So, routine blading on all county roads, catching up from the monsoon rains. We're still adding material in areas, especially on Bear Mountain, and a big washout that was on whitewater was a safety issue, and got that completed. Our Fox Hill project was completed on Ridge Road, Kirkland, and Flurry. The striping's going to continue, will start in the upcoming weeks. Our routine patching on the bypass road and Western Drive for, we're updating those driveways, trying to get some of those things tied back in after that work was done. We also, there was a crowning issue and a curve there. The diming excavating is fixing under warranty for us, and so they, they cut out a section of asphalt where the water was ponding, and it was just in a bad spot for the winter time to be coming up, for black ice to be hanging out in there. So, we got that fixed. Also, the tree trimming, 80% completed on the Iron Bridge Road and McCully Road. Those are prepping for some road projects for next year, but they made, there was a ton of overgrowth on those, those roads, so they look way better now. We're also helping out the Forest Service on L E S Road out there, off of Old Durin's Valley Road. We're going to be doing some culverts and lifting the road for the work that they did on their new parking lot for the Dragonfly Trailhead. Future projects, we're going to continue to finish up and make progress towards completing the fiscal year 23, 24 cap and SP projects, along with our fiscal year 24, 25 cap SP and SBR projects. Stand for any questions?
I don't have any, do you? Go ahead.
Hey, Jason, last year, we worked on that baseball field out in Cliff. I know it's related to more maintenance, but I know it's on the agenda about some moving it around, stuff like that. You guys can just keep an eye on it, and there's a lot of positive comments when you guys got that filled up and for those kids. I really appreciate that, and I just, I'd hate for all your hard work to go to waste. Just, I know, I know it's something outside on your list, but just, just consider it, please.
Yes, sir. We will, we'll continue that.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it with our reports? Okay, County Manager, agenda review, it's all yours.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, you have your agenda for Thursday in front of you. First item on the agenda is a proclamation for the 15th anniversary of W N M U Remembrance, Remembrance March Walk for the Heroes. Chief Deputy County Assessor, Raul Trujillo, will be presenting that. Under Presentations, Item B, Presentation on Proposed New Wireless Tower, Kim Wood with the site acquisition, she's the site acquisition and zoning specialist that Dean mentioned. She will be giving you some more information on the proposed new tower that Dean just spoke to you about. Item C, this will be the presentation of our fiscal year 23 financial audit. Representative from Carr, Riggs, and Ingram will be here to review that audit with you. Audit's been finalized and released by the State Auditor's Office, though this is the next step, is presenting that audit to the commission.
Did we already get through the 10-day waiting period?
Yes.
We can talk about it now?
Yes, and that's why this is on there, that 10 days has expired, so. You have your regular monthly Gila Regional Medical Center report from CEO, Robert Whitaker. There are eight items on your consent agenda. I don't know if you've had a chance to glance at those, if you have any questions or need to explain any of those items.
Amendment to food ser, we, this is a food service agreement we're already in with the detention center, just being amended to some?
Yes, so it's to renew and extend the term. So, we are allowed, so it's just the annual renewal that we do each year until the term of the contract is expired, so that's what this is for.
Okay.
It's not a new contract.
Got it.
Any other questions? Okay. Moving on to new business. Item E, Consideration of Horizon Tower Application at 16 Red Cliff Road and Mimbres. And hopefully, with today's presentation and the presentation that you have from Ms. Wood on Thursday, hopefully you have enough information to proceed with that. Item F, Consideration of Approval of the Corey Camino's Budget for Fiscal Year 25, 26. Kim, do you want to come just give a brief overview of that, please?
And this is because we're on a federal fiscal year, right?
Yes, hers, hers falls on a federal fiscal year.
Okay.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. There's not a whole lot of difference on, on the budget from fiscal year 24 to 25. On the, the document I sent you, I, I put the projected, we're still working on finalizing the 24 closeouts. So, you have my projected closeout on 24 and my proposed 25 budget. Really, the only, the only substantial changes is I have budgeted for a 5% per hour, or 5% increase for all Corey Camino's staff. That puts everybody except for our relatively new employee at the mid-range. She's only been here two years, so hopefully by, by next fiscal year, we'll be moving her up into the mid-range, but it's a 5% increase across the board for everyone else. I did put notes, and we did move some items in between operating and admin just to keep to our 75, 25 required admin to operating ratio. So, no changes in amounts, just their move from operating to admin. And that's, that's really, that's really our budget. Were you able to review?
I don't have it on here, but, we don't have it, but we, so the only change, my understanding, the only change is the increase to get everybody to mid-level? Other than that, it's staying pretty much?
Other than that, rather, other than the, the typical increases in para, things like that, that's county-wide.
The usual stuff that comes up every year?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, Commissioners?
Nothing.
We'll get that to you.
Thank you, County Manager.
Moving on to agreements. Item G, Consideration of Agreement A 2440 Local Driving While Intoxicated Program. We reference LDWI Grant Agreement 25 dash D dash G dash 10. Daniel?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, this is the grant portion that's typically issued in April, May. It was on hold due to the audit for our county, so it couldn't be put forward until the audit was completed. So, that's, this is going to take place a little bit later than planned, but this is going to cover the funding, the grant that was awarded for Personnel Services, for Prevention Specialist, Treatment for Clients, and then also partial funding for Corey Cantinas. And then I stand for any questions?
Grant agreement was for $94,000?
And we'll see, basically, another one coming up probably next month for the special application that we were awarded in October, October 2nd, which will be additional funding for some projects that we have coming up.
Thank you.
And at this time, I'd like to introduce, we have a new employee, Samantha Jones. She took over for Patrick Avalos. He moved on to Aldo Leopold, and she started with us on October the 2nd, wasn't it? Or no, September. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. Welcome aboard. Thank you, guys, for what you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on to Item H, Consideration of Agreement A 2441 GPS Efficiency Monitoring Agreement with Wagner Equipment. Robert?
Again, this is an agreement to provide maintenance for our blades, six blades for the road department. It is with Wagner, it is under state contract, and in addition to providing the maintenance, we also get a 25% discount on filters and batteries, which, when I ran against the 2024 numbers, that was approximate, that would have been an approximate savings of about $6,700, so that doesn't necessarily, it helps offset the cost of the maintenance contract, but it's just a little extra to give us some incentive to enter into an agreement. I think the, the main focus of this agreement is simple because we don't necessarily have the decent mechanics, so to provide the, the maintenance for these six costly heavy equipment blades, I, I think to maintain their efficiency and their effectiveness. Additionally, having a documented maintenance program would also give us a higher resale or trade-in value when it comes time to dispose of the equipment, because it would be documented with Wagner, which is a, is a partner with CAT, and our, I believe our six blades are all CAT equipment, so that, that's also an additional incentive. So, again, I stand for any questions, and also, Adam Segaro with Wagner is in the office, is in the audience if you have any questions.
So, my, my only thing with this is, I mean, there's different types of GPS in, in, heavy equipment or equipment, so this is just going to be tracking our maintenance and making sure that we're doing what we need to do to keep it efficient?
It, it actually tracks location. It'll ping, for example, if you have a, a blade out there in the open, and for some reason, somebody starts it up on a Saturday, it will actually notify us that somebody is starting it up. It has geofencing, so we can limit the radius of the equipment, plus it also has a tracking for idle time. Again, as I mentioned, that would help us recognize opportunities for retraining. What we don't want is, we don't want people sitting in a piece of equipment for hours on end, waiting for asphalt or millions or, or filter. We, this, again, would help us extend the life and the efficiency of the equipment. So, it's a little bit more than just a location. It's, it's, offers additional benefits, and Mr. Segaro would like to come up and maybe, maybe add to that?
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. County Manager Webb. So, essentially, what this service does, it's called Vision Link. It's in any piece of Caterpillar equipment that you guys receive or get, and I have a list here of everything. that you guys receive or get, um, and I have a list here of everything, all the functions that that piece, uh, that that uh, system has, um, so if you guys do decide to enter with the agreement, you guys do get a Connect Pro subscription, subscription for free, um, courtesy of Wagner, uh, with that subscription, you'd be able to look at diagnostic codes, so say if there's a field filter restriction, anything of that sort, it will come up on that system. Another thing we can do is if you guys have an admin, Mr. Jason, uh, we can get him set up, and that way, if something does happen, he'll either get an email and alert, and that way, he, he's uh, uh, notified right away as soon as that happens. Uh, a lot of times what happens is when, when you don't have that, uh, whoever's running the machine, they'll kind of ignore it until this, that uh, problem gets worse, and that's obviously more costly to you all. With that, as Mr. Robert mentioned, you can geofence, uh, you can see when these machines are turned off, turned on, um, how much work they're actually producing, um, and other various, other various items on here, and if you'd like, I can give you a list, this list is usually, you can uh, go through it and take a look, take a look at it, uh, but I stand for any questions.
No, thank you, I'm good with that, so, thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Moving on to Item I, Consideration of Agreement A twenty-four forty-two, lease contract with Sourcewell Member Through Enterprise for Fleet Vehicle Replacement Program, Robert?
Good morning, again, we're looking at vehicle replacement program, um, obviously it's a high expenditure, capital expenditure vehicles, so what we're trying to do is look at how we can leverage dollars, because we have a lot of aging fleet, and rather than come up with um, an, an addition, an initial outlay amount, we're looking at maybe perhaps leasing over five years with a equity buyout, so um, for example, we have identified several vehicles, again, we have about nineteen that are two thousand twelve or older, we've identified approximately seven vehicles, um, eight vehicles that need replacing, some are with the Sheriff's Department, Detention Center is in desperate need of a vehicle, um, I think they recently had to borrow one of Admin's vehicles, so they also have a aging transport vehicle that probably needs to be phased out, if nothing else, just for the qualitative factor of safety, so um, after speaking with Mr. Andazola, there, there's a definite need there, because District Court does schedule quite a few employee, a few inmates uh, for court hearings on Mondays, and it's uh, our current, um, our current equipment, oh, uh, we have to use two vehicles to facilitate that, and I, again, one of them is, is quite old, it's actually, uh, looks like it's a nineteen ninety-seven Ram seven passenger van, so that one would definitely need to be phased out, we also have the Assessor's Office, a Jeep Liberty two thousand and five, um, that's quite old, it probably needs to be phased out fairly soon, so entering into this agreement with Enterprise, uh, Fleet Management would give us an opportunity to get uh, more vehicles to start be, building our vehicle replacement program without the heavy capital outlay, and I did run some numbers, so for example, if we wanted to replace these uh, eight vehicles, we would have to come up with four hundred and ten thousand approximately, versus over the lifetime of the lease, it's about four hundred and thirteen thousand, so is there a, a, an additional amount, incremental amount, over purchase amount, right? Yes, but there's also benefits, because th- these do fall under a maintenance program with Enterprise, and they also offer various types of uh, geofencing, governing, monitoring, so that could be added to any of the vehicles. In the past, the Sheriff's Department had used grant funds to obtain some of these vehicles, not the complete amount, but um, that's not a sustain- sustainable source of uh, revenue, so that's why we're looking at uh, building up a vehicle replacement program, and again, um, we would have to analyze it with our current policy, uh, what I've, what I'm proposing to the policy is a uh, a scoring system that helps us give us a diminishing returns point, when to replace the equipment, so um, this will give us an excellent opportunity to kind of ru- run it through, um, as, I'm not wanna say a pilot program, but it'd give us a chance to see if this is a program that's gonna work for us, and at the same time, it does facilitate an immediate need by replacing those vehicles that have aged quite a bit. Christine Spears is here with Enterprise Fleet Management, and she, both her and I stand for any questions.
So my, my only question, especially the law enforcement, Sheriff's Department, I mean, I know the road department has a lot of mileage too, they cover the roads in the county, but is there like a, a mileage limit to where we hit that and trade it in because of safety aspects, or is it just?
So, we identified that from the Sheriff's Department standpoint, and I believe Sheriff Inueva and his under Sheriff Ben Como both addressed this to Ms. Spears, and there are some, some um, adjustment factors that we can implement for those vehicles, I'll have Christine elaborate on that.
Yeah, thank you for having me today, um, so to elaborate a little further on that, so when we talk about lease, it's not like a traditional dealer lease that you guys are seeing, if you or I were to go lease a vehicle in a dealership, it's more, it's what we call our open-end equity lease, um, where we may say, hey, forty-eight months, based off of the Sheriff's Department's mileage patterns is the optimal time for you guys buy that vehicle, hold on to it, sell it, capitalize on that equity, um, but at the end of forty-eight months, if you guys want to extend out that term or uh, even cut it short at any point, that is up to you guys, and we're just gonna be here from a financial um, perspective to provide you guys recommendations on when the optimal time to replace the vehicles are.
Okay, good, thank you. Nothing?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Item J, Consideration of Agreement A twenty-four forty-three, Purchase Agreement with Silver Consolidated Schools for the Cliff Baseball Field, this is in total approximately six point seven three acres, which contains the baseball field at Cliff and along with two or three pieces of playground equipment, and what this does is the school are selling us the park for a dollar. Both uh, legal entities have reviewed the agreement, and it, they both approve of it, so this would be finalizing that transfer of property for a dollar. Any questions or concerns?
Glad we're doing that.
And I would add to um, Commissioner Medina's comment, Maintenance has been doing a very good job of staying out there and staying on top of it, and we have lots of plans in the future, we just needed to have this formalized first, so we'll continue to work on it.
Thank you so much.
Next, Item K, Consideration of Agreement A twenty-four forty-four, Purchase of point one seven five seven of an acre parcel from the estate of Dolores Flores, what this is, is it's a strip of um, basically the driveway that lies between the corner of the old Burger King Building to the corner of our building, and it would just um, give us the ability to purchase that from her estate, to just clean up the boundaries and um, the ownership to where it's a little easier to take care of, so that would just realign that, and um, the total purchase price is eight thousand, which the Florists have agreed to, and this would formalize that uh, sale of property. Questions, go to your next. Next, Item L, Consideration of Agreement A twenty-four forty-five, Intergovernmental Agreement with the Sixth Judicial District Court for Improvements to the Grant County Courthouse, Joseph touched on this in his report, we can elaborate on it further if you'd like, or if you have any questions?
Can we just do that on Thursday? Can, can he be here on Thursday, in case the Commissioners have questions to approve this?
Yes. Moving on to Resolutions, Item M, Consideration of Resolution R twenty-four fifty, Authorizing the, the Acceptance of Grant Offer from New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration for Appropriation Number twenty-four Z, that's an I, five zero four two dash zero six, in the amount of five hundred and twenty-five thousand for Detention Center Corrections Recruitment, this works very similar as the law enforcement recruitment has worked in the past, and this provides funding over the course of three years to um, for new Detention Center salaries, so we can use this um, funding to fill vacant positions, so we would ask for your approval of this grant agreement. Do you have any questions on it? Item N, Consideration of Resolution R twenty-four dash five one, Resolution to Extend Termination Date for CAP twenty-four, I'm just gonna read through O and P and, or, and O and have him explain it to you at the same time, Consideration of Resolution R twenty-four dash five two, Resolution to Extend Termination Date for uh, SP twenty-twenty-four, Jason?
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, yes, so consideration of extending these uh, termination dates to, into next year, um, so we're just a little behind on trying to get these processes done, um, can't really make any excuses, just trying to clean up what we've, what I was dealt with, and so, we've been sat back with some asphalt, um, plant, I guess, shortages, could say it that way, it went down for a while, um, and like I said, this, I just wanted to, to make sure that you all understand, it's not gonna be zero percent complete by the end of the year, I just can't get it a hundred percent complete by the end of the year, so, early next year, um, I think we will have both of those knocked out, um, God willing, that the, the weather's okay, but we'll make it happen, um, we'll get that fit in, uh, County Manager Webb and I have had some conversations, and we will not be doing any more extensions in the future, so we're gonna make sure that we get all these knocked out.
Questions or concerns?
Thank you, Jason.
Item P, Consideration of Resolution R twenty-four dash five three, A Resolution to Accept the Fiscal Twenty-three Audit Findings, Robert mentioned this in his report, I don't know if he wants to go into further detail, but this is a requirement that we send to DFA acknowledging our plan of action to correct our fiscal year twenty-three audit findings.
Again, this is a requirement from DFA Local Government Division, and they're asking for act- basically an action plan on how we're gonna resolve the audit findings, we've addressed several of the audit findings already, and we already have a plan in motion for the other audit findings, so again, this is a requirement, um, there is a resolution, this resolution, um, will of course go up to DFA Local Government Division. Any questions?
I would just like to add that Robert and his team have been working very, very diligently and very hard on cleaning this up, um, there was a tremendous number of findings, um, that are pretty complicated to clean up, and also in tandem, working on the fiscal year twenty-four audit, so I just wanna commend them for their hard work. Moving on, Item Q, Consideration of Resolution R twenty-four fifty-four, Budget Adjustment Request, Robert?
Again, as I mentioned earlier, we have a number of budget adjustments, we're trying to take a more proactive approach to budgeting, and we wanna start earlier this fiscal year and bridge the communication between the departments, but for this current fiscal year, we're, we're gonna require several budget adjustments, again, we're trying to true up the budgets, we're trying to give the uh, various departments like Airport, Volunteer Fire Departments, we're trying to give them the budget uh, authorization that they need, so, again, we carried over cash balances, but it doesn't do any good if we don't increase the budget authority and allow them to use it to buy bunker gear and other items that are, uh, have been needed for quite some time. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman? This is Commissioner Brown.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner, we do have several hard copies that I could provide to you, we also have them electronically, if you'd rather, we could go ahead and email that to you for immediate review.
Okay, if you move, that will break, I can follow.
Okay, we'll get that done.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions on the bar that's in front of you? Last item, R, Consideration of Resolution R twenty-four dash five five, Resolution to Certify Fixed Assets for Fiscal Year Twenty-four, before Robert explains this in further detail, um, this is something that should be done every year, um, that we've been locks on, and it is a requirement that the County Commission certify our annual inventory every year, so that's what this is.
As County Manager Webb mentioned, this is something that's required on an annual basis, and I have not been able to identify the last time we did this, so it's just basically an asset listing, and how the fixed assets work is you take your beginning balances, you account for depreciation, you add your additions, you subtract your deletions, you account for your transfers, and you come up with a final fixed asset listing, that you have some confidence, some degree of certainty, that you can certify, and Veronica's been doing a really good job with this, uh, putting it together, we do need to further come up with a better policy, a bridge between purchasing and accounts payable, I have actually a draft policy, so we'll be probably presenting that to you fairly soon, if not in November, but uh, I think it's, it's, it's something that we need to identify in the title rebuild, currently, our AP person can add fixed assets, so we just need to improve the communication and build in a formal pro- policy and process to make sure this gets done, we also had CRI come in, I'm sorry, RCI come in last, uh, last November and did a complete inventory, so from there was just a matter of accounting for additions and deletions and transfers, so I feel with some degree of certainty that the fixed asset listing that you, we're asking you to certify is complete and thorough. Any questions?
Well, that, that, you answered my question, I was wondering, when we had that done, what, about a year ago, reading in the systems, hopefully it makes it a little easier for everybody, so, thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, Adam.
And Robert's on the right chalk, um, it's a little unusual that your AP person can't ask things to capital when they're paying the bill, but he's, he's on the right chalk with um, getting things to where processes work.
Correct, we're, we're, we're trying to evaluate opportunities for internal controls, and that's one of the areas that we need to uh, tweak and finalize.
Thank you.
That concludes your agenda for Thursday.
You know, I, I think that, just a comment that, that audit we just uh, went through and what's gonna be presented on Thursday, I think was very good, I think we've noticed what needs to be done, and, and even though we got dinged a little bit, that's fine, we'll, we'll get on it. Thank you guys for doing that. Commissioners, do you, do any Commissioners have a report? He's got a couple comments. Go ahead, Commissioner Medina.
So, just a reminder, the Members Health Fair is this coming up weekend, um, at the San Lorenzo School, um, they do a lot of good things out there, invite the public to attend, the other thing is I'll be having a meeting Wednesday, ten, uh, October thirtieth at the Members Senior Center, as one of my quarterly meetings with the Members People, I invite everybody to attend as well, that's all I got.
Thank you. Anything, Commissioner Brown? Okay, I have no Commissioner report.
So, it takes a while, I mean, you have to, uh, I got nothing, Chair, but I'd be glad to know if you survived the hurricane in Southern Mexico.
All right, well, you enjoy it. Okay, having no other reports, I'll uh, adjourn this.